All right. Good morning and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining our special Northeast Indigenous Climate Resilience Network meeting. This is outside of our regular quarterly meetings, so we're very appreciative that you've joined us today. We have a special speaker with us, Omar Gates. And Omar is a climatologist for the Great Lakes Integrated Sciences and Assessments, also known as GLESA. He provides climate information and data to researchers and decision makers throughout the Great Lakes region. And with these engagements, he translates the climate science for informing adaptation planning in multiple sectors. He also works with practitioners and supervises undergrad and graduate students in their applied climate work. At GLESA, he is the tribal liaison and he helps integrate climate science with indigenous knowledges for adaptation practices of the Great Lakes tribes and tribal organizations. These experiences cultivate the valuable lessons of maintaining trust and strengthening relationships with tribal communities. So without further ado, Omar Gates, take it away.
Thank you, Sarah, for that introduction. And again, thank you, Casey, for letting me be able to join this call, as well as Sarah for letting me participate as well. For today, as the email denoted, I primarily will be talking about the Climate and Hazard Mitigation Planning Tool, or CHAMP for short. And again, this will just be a brief overview of the tool. And of course, instead of me just lecturing to you all, which I don't want to do for today, it's more of an interactive discussion, which I'll have questions for you all in order to get your feedback on the tool based upon the presentation from today. And so now I'll go ahead and share my screen right quick. And just to make sure, can everyone see it?
Yep.
Great. So again, going to pre, I'm going to be presenting on the CHAMP tool. But before we get into all of that, let me first introduce you all to NOAA Regional Integrated Sciences and Assessments, or the NOAA RESA for short. With this, we're a collection of national teams or regional teams in which we help the nation prepare for and adapt to climate variability and change. And with GLESA, we're one of 11 NOAA RESA's in which, again, we support all eight Great Lakes states, including the province of Ontario, Canada, as you can see on the right with the figure showing us in the Great Lakes basin area. With that, with the partnership between the University of Michigan and Michigan State University, as well as other partners in the region, this is what makes up GLESA for much of our work throughout the Great Lakes region. And with GLESA, we not only take information from the physical sciences, but we also use the social sciences. And through integration, collaboration, extension with our partners in the region, we're able to provide services to them in order to help them be able to understand a changing climate, especially in the Great Lakes region. And from this, many of these services use existing information and data that's publicly available for partners and stakeholders. From this services, or these services, I should say, we try to answer three important questions of what has happened, what could happen, and what impacts are involved. So now that I've given you a brief introduction to GLESA and the NOAA RESA program, let's go and jump into what the CHAMP is all about. So to give you a little bit of background, the CHAMP originated from a NOAA cross-RESA collaboration. From here, the Climate Program Office, or CPO, created these collaboration grants focusing on partnerships between RESA teams. Many, many of these collaborations require two or more RESA teams for this to work. So the Mid-Atlantic RESA, or MARESA in this case, in partnership with the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, reach out to CISA, the Carolinas RESA, as well as us at GLESA in order to work on the Climate and Hazard Mitigation Planning Tool, or the CHAMP Tool, for all three regions, that is, the Mid-Atlantic, the Carolinas, and the Great Lakes regions. From here, the motivation for the tool was that we all understood that FEMA requires all state, local, and tribal governments to have HMPs to be eligible for federal disaster mitigation grants. From here, with the CHAMP Tool, we hope that communities are able to integrate not only climate information, but also hazard data into their FEMA HMPs, or any other plan for that matter. With this, in order to talk about some of the sources, primarily, most of the climate data comes or is gathered by the Northeast Regional Climate Center, or NRCC. With the observations, those come from the Applied Climate Information System. And for our model projections that look towards the future, we also have information from the localized constructed analogs models, the same ones that are used in the National Climate Assessment as well. From this, in terms of hazard data and impacts, we have that from the National Science for Environmental Information's own storm event database. So now that I talked a little bit about the tool, let's actually see it in real time. So with this, hopefully, everything goes according to plan. Let me go ahead and share my screen again. Yep. And now this is the CHAMP Tool. So with the CHAMP Tool, this is the basic landing page that many people will be able to come to as soon as they go to the CHAMP Tool, in which they'll see several different options and several different things. The first thing that they might notice, again, is all three regions shown on the map, which include the Great Lakes region, the Mid-Atlantic, as well as the Carolinas. From here, we have different panels and different things on the page in order to help people navigate the tool as well. The main one, which is the selection panel. From here, users are able to choose three different categories or two, depending upon the theme. With those themes, many of them range from a variety of different hazards and different aspects related to climate, which include coastal hazards, drought, extreme rainfall, all the way to winter weather. From here, based upon the theme, they're able to look at, again, the different hazards that are associated with that theme. And again, it varies based upon whichever one the user chooses. Ultimately, whenever a user figures out which hazard they are interested in, they can look at the different impacts that are associated with that hazard, whether it's total reported episodes, crop damage, property damage, as well as total reported deaths and injuries. And of course, if there is a specific timeframe that they are interested in, they are able to look at information from, with those hazards, from 1996 through 2020, based upon the storm events database. So let's dive into like a situation in which a user may find additional features within the tool. So with this, say, a user was interested in extreme rainfall. Then from there, they were looking at, say, flooding, in this case. And with that, they want to know the total reported episodes. Now with this, of course, you see all of those states have been highlighted. But a feature within the tool is that you can go ahead and hover over each of the states in order to see a blurb about how many events occurred based upon the number of events reported. But another neat feature is that you can actually click on a certain state in order to see everything at the county level. With this, say, if I wanted to look at Okanto County, I will click on that county and be able to zoom in a little bit more in order to see how many events occurred. With that, by going and clicking on this show chart feature, we're actually able to see more information based upon the reports that have been shown. And again, whenever the user goes into this tool, they're able to copy and paste, of course, any of that information from the tool in order to make that ease of putting the information from the CHAMP Tool into your own hazard mitigation plan. With this, many of the events shown here can be clicked on in order for people to see what actually happened for those certain events and the different counties that are impacted as well. And again, as stated before, the user can go ahead and copy and paste any of this text from the tool directly into whatever document they're having. And another feature of the CHAMP Tool is that many users, in case they are interested in downloading these charts, are able to download them in different file formats, whether it's PNG, JPEG, or PDF in this case. From here, if, again, someone was interested in not only just a hazard for temperature and precipitation variables, we also have climate metrics available for those specific variables. In this, a person may be interested in figuring out what's the total spring precipitation for that county. From here, a person can look at the trend from, all the way from 1981 to 2020, in which we're seeing the trends based upon observations from, again, the ACES system. From here, as you hover over a bubble, you're able to see the different types of measurements that was recorded for that particular year. But again, that's just for observations. Say if someone was interested in the future projections, well, those are available as well, thanks to the local models. With that, we see that much of the spread for the models is very variable. But at the same time, we do have this model mean, which is shown in the black line right here. And again, when we're talking about high emissions and low emissions, we're doing this based upon the greenhouse gas emission scenarios of RCP 8.5 for high emissions and RCP 4.5 for low emissions. And of course, again, the user is able to download this information or download the chart and image in any type of file format that they want. So again, this is just a brief overview of the CHAMP Tool. And of course, again, this isn't me just lecturing the whole entire time. I'd like to, again, get your feedback based upon initial reactions of the CHAMP Tool. And of course, I do have discussion questions that I would like to get a little bit more feedback on. But for now, are there any questions or are there any, first, any type of feedback that you have in mind?
Thanks, Omar. This is Mike Dockery. That really looks like an interesting tool and really useful. I did, I might have missed it, but can you do this for state and/or multiple counties and combine different, I guess, geographical regions?
So currently, because this is version one of the tool, it's mainly focusing on just one county at a time. So again, although I did select this one county, if you zoom out, you're able to see how that county is in relation to its surrounding counties as well. And of course, with the region, if necessary. But as you go ahead and click on, say, a hazard, well, an actual hazard type for that county, and again, showing the charts and showing the events, you're able to see the surrounding counties or the other impacted counties as well for that specific event or the, yeah, during that specific year. So hopefully, I was able to answer your question.
Sure. Yeah, this is great. I think for future, and you're probably thinking about this, having it so you can select multiple either counties or states and have those sort of tabulate new charts, that would be great. But this is awesome. Really cool. Thanks.
Thank you, Omar. I have a question as well. Looking at it, so do each county, the data, do they all go back to 1996? Or is it different for each county depending on how much data is available?
Yeah, so that's the latter point, because again, even Sarah can attest to this. There were some counties that didn't have information all the way up to, all the way going back to 1996 or even going up to present with 2020. So again, it varies based upon the events that have been reported by the National Weather Service, as well as NOAA in terms of their storm event database. So yeah, that's like the main gist of it. But hopefully, with iterations to come, we're able to add in more information or more data sets, which can fill in the holes, hopefully, or potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional feedback?
We have one in the chat box saying that this is a fantastic tool and thank you for sharing, and that's from Karen.
Yep. Someone else?
Just, is this, can, is this live? I didn't, I'm sorry if I missed that as well.
No, I didn't actually say that. So yes, that's a good question. So currently, this tool is in beta as of now, and hopefully by the end of August, fingers crossed, we're able to actually launch this publicly for everyone else to use and provide additional feedback. But for now, with, of course, many of the testing and group meetings such as this, it's basically just showing the tool in order to like get feedback from you all. So again, if you are seeing any problems or any hesitations or you're getting stuck at parts, that's the feedback that we would like to know as of now in order to get that out of the way before the official launch.
Yeah, so I would have another comment about that. When you zoomed out and you could see the specific things for the multiple counties based on color, if that can be printed or saved as those different formats, that would be very useful as well.
Okay.
So I had a question, any, and I'm not sure if you know this, or Casey or Sarah can know this, as well as any plans for including New England states? Sorry, that's where we do the majority of our work. Yeah.
Yeah, so currently, because this was a collaboration between the Mid-Atlantic, Carolinas, and Great Lakes regions, we didn't really necessarily, I guess, partner with our Northeast RESA CC run. But they will be the ones that would like integrate most of the New England stuff. But of course, with the Northeast Regional Climate Center, I don't think that will be a problem at all to like bring that information into the tool. But yes, thank you for that question.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, it's, it is powerful, I mean, for a variety of concerns, right, that tribes have. So yeah, really, really look for that.
All right. So if there is no additional feedback, I do have questions for you all. So again, let me go back to the presentation right quick. So again, with these discussion questions, these are just questions that you can just either answer in chat or you can just speak up at any time and just give your opinion about what you've seen of the tool and like what improvements or any honest feedback that you have in terms of what can we do in order to like make it useful for you all. So with that, the first set of questions I have is based upon the structure of the tool and ease of use. So first question I have is,
Hey Omar.
Yeah.
We can't see your spine.
Gotcha. Stop sharing, and we're gonna do this again. All right. Screen one. How about now?
Yep.
Great. All right. Thank you for pointing that out, Sarah. And again, for the first set of questions, this is based upon the structure of the tool and ease of use. So with the first question I have is, did you find the tool easy to navigate? As well as, was it easy to navigate to a specific area or a county that you're interested in?
Yeah, it looks very easy to use.
And feel free to put your answers in the chat as well.
Yep. Any more takers?
Hey Omar, this is Tom. Yeah, it was easy to use and easily found, Monomni County.
Thank you for that. All right. And again, at any time, if you want to come back to this question, feel free to put your answers into the chat at any time. Again, any feedback is valuable feedback. So if you feel that the tool is not necessarily up your alley or not necessarily useful, please feel free to say that as well. Again, I have tough skin. I'm not gonna jump off the call saying like, oh, I feel insulted. No. This is again, something to help all the users within all three regions be able to use this tool to the best of their ability. And again, I wouldn't be doing my job if I just didn't have, I guess, that tough skin, going back to that. But for the next question, and I digress, let's talk about the functionality of the tool. First question I have is, did you find the functionality relatively intuitive? And again, another point, were there any areas in the tool where you felt stuck or you just didn't quite understand what was going on?
Hey Omar, Rob Crowe from Gliffwick. I came in late, so I missed kind of the introduction to everything. But having missed the introduction to everything, the tool looks very straightforward. It's intuitive, and I think I could like just jump right on it and go.
Thank you for that.
I echo Rob's comments.
Thank you.
Tom also agrees. I'm not sure if you can see the chat at the same time, Omar, so.
Let me open that up so I'm not confused or anything of that nature. Great. Yep, and I just saw your comment, Mike, about CSV and Excel format. Yep. Thank you for that. All right. So in terms of next category, and of course, I'm pretty sure you see this on the left-hand side of your screen. And wait a minute, I see one more from Aaron. All right, yeah. Thank you for that, Aaron. And so to ask you a question, Kirk, because this tool is again being updated constantly, if I were to give you a link, I'm not sure if that link will actually be valid by the time you like approach the tool or you look at the tool. So instead of just giving you like a link and just everything one day be there, next day not, just, most likely is not publicly available just of now. But again, at any time when it is publicly available, I'll make sure to notify either Casey or Sarah about the availability. But yeah, thank you for that question. All right. So in terms of the next category, for data available, are the data presented in an accessible and useful way? Were the charts useful for knowing trends in your area? Whether, for those charts, I mean, for the temperature precipitation charts, showing those trend lines and just showing those projections, were those actually of use? And could they be useful for your particular area of interest?
In the chat, Casey, okay. I was gonna read it out, just so watching the recording will know what we're nodding or responding to. So Casey said he thought the trend lines and charts were very useful and easy to read.
Thank you for that, Casey.
And then Mike had a comment that he has to sign off, but the tool has a real possibility of helping with travel planning for climate change and thinks that it is also helpful beyond just hazard planning into broad integrated resource planning.
Thank you for that, Mike.
Any other thoughts from the audience?
All right. I think we can go on to the next category. And I think what Mike brought up may have actually been for the next category, but for this category, it's more along the lines of like understanding the scale of the tool and utility of the current tool. So there are four questions here, but I'll just briefly go and through them. Is the county level an appropriate scale that you think for this tool? Are seeded territories, particularly for this group, a useful scale for this tool? And if those aren't the appropriate scales, is there another type that you have in mind? And I believe Mike brought this up before, would multi-county scales for hazard and climate data be reasonable? And also, at any time, if you want me to go back to the tool just to make sure that you like understand it, please let me know. And I see from the chat from Kirk, we often, we work often by watersheds. Is it possible to clip to that scale? So that's one thing that we were thinking about when we were discussing about having different types of shape files in the tool. Now, again, with the hazard information, it's at the county level. But one idea from the team, or I should say the CHAMP team, is that they would want to have, say, GIS files or shape files of certain boundaries, say a watershed, in order to show you like within that watershed, what counties are located or what hazards are within that specific boundary. So yeah, thank you for that. And I believe there were a few others here.
Yep, they were just echoing the watershed level scale.
Okay.
I think Rob was gonna say something, though. Or maybe not. I did see Rob.
I typed it.
So seeded territory scale would be helpful. Oh, but seed territory by treaty boundary.
So because we work with four different treaties, and when we start doing adaptation planning, we're gonna be doing it for each of the different treaty areas. And there's enough, there's enough variation between northern Minnesota and the eastern end of the Upper Peninsula that, you know, something over that big of a geographic scale probably wouldn't be as useful.
Then Kirk had a comment as well, following up on the shape file. Would it be possible for someone to provide their own shape file and have the analysis run on that?
So currently, I believe that's not possible at this time for version one. But in terms of like having users be able to bring in their own shape file, again, that's just something that I would have to take back to the CHAMP Tool team in order to like get their feedback on it and making sure that either it was because of security reasons or whatever, they can just have users be able to do that. But yes, that is a good question, and I should be able to like ask them about that. So thank you for that. All right, there are no more, there's no more feedback for this set of questions. Next set, of course, is envisioning the tool for HMP planning. For this, it's information presented in a way that can be easily integrated into, say, your hazard mitigation planning work. And of course, I believe Mike brought this up in chat. Can this be, can this tool be applied to other plans for your community?
Omar, Tral, again, I think that for us anyway, having access to historical and then projection data, projection trends, can be useful for doing things like adaptation planning.
Mm hmm.
Nice, easy, one-step, one-stop shopping. So we're not going through a bunch of different products looking for the information.
Mm hmm. Thank you for that, Rob.
I was gonna add, this is Casey here from USET. You know, this is, I think, also produces information that is useful for vulnerability assessments. You know, if we looked at it at a, maybe a county level or or if it could be looked at, say, for like watershed level, we can kind of go through some of the hazards that are occurring and have occurred historically. I think that would also be helpful information.
Mm hmm. Thank you for that, Casey. All right. So I think we're getting near the end. So hopefully, yes, this is the final set of questions. With that, again, this is just additional data sets and information for future versions. So based upon, again, although we have temperature and precipitation data available, are there any other types of variables or impacts that we should include? And then for my second questions, especially for stuff outside of hazards and weather and climate, would health information be helpful in future versions of the tool?
Well, this is Casey again. I think I see waterborne illness cases as an example. I think those would be other useful variables to have. We are seeing on Cape Cod and in the Mash areas this summer cyanobacteria blooms in freshwater lakes and ponds. And we have community advisories out now. So we're not able to use those waters right now. So it, you know, I'd be interested. And I know two thousand and five was also a bad year on the Cape, so I'd be interested in seeing kind of the trends of cyanobact harmful algal blooms and freshwater, brackish water and coastal areas as well.
Thank you for that.
And then in the chat, invasive species and pests such as EAB were mentioned. And then also as much data as possible for it to be a great one-stop shop.
Definitely. And thank you for those comments.
And there's another comment as well. Kirk says, we're presently working to provide septic versus sewage coverage, in particular, septic failure due to climate change. This has been of real interest to planners, though the records are hard to come by.
And for those records, well, is there a specific source that you go to Kirk in order to like get the information now? Or is there like other agencies or other groups that you know of that collect that specific data?
Well, hi Omar, I was gonna type, but so I figured I'd just tell you. Yeah, most of the the information we're getting, we get from is from the health departments and its failure rates or repair permits, you know, for septic systems. The problem is that most of those are in paper documents and so paper records. So it really varies by state and counties on whether they have digital information. But for those that do have digital information, it's really a, an enlightening bit of information to look at where the septic system failure rates are happening. And generally, they're in, they're in underrepresented communities in many cases.
Thank you for that, Kirk. Again, if I, at any time, I'm muting my mic is because lawn people are doing work. So again, I don't want to like interrupt anyone's audio or have you hear them through the audio. So again, but thank you again for that, Kirk. Are there any other feedback or questions about the tool?
Yeah, this case again, I just wanted to reiterate Darren's earlier comments. So any opportunities for partnership and kind of expanding the tool, I think would be really great. As you said, we work with tribal nations also in there, the space of New England and all the way down to the Gulf. So I know that has a lot to do with, again, the partnerships between the different reses. But just want to reiterate that any expansion of this, I think, is going to be also more helpful and accessible to more tribal nations.
Definitely. I think that that's something that hopefully in future iterations of the tool, we're able to expand this not only for those three regions, but also to other parts of the US as well as partnering with other organizations, like you said, in order to get other perspectives and get in additional information that can be helpful to not just only cities, but also tribes. So thank you for that.
Any final thoughts or comments or questions? Oh, and they're requesting your contact info.
Fortunately, I have a slide for that. So again, for more information about the tool or anything related to the Champ tool, feel free to contact me at my email, as you can see here, which is gateso@umich.edu. And again, for this, I would like to thank you all for your time and consideration throughout all of this. Again, I understand that this was a special meeting and outside of the usual timeframe or scheduling for the nice room meetings. But again, I would like to thank Sarah and Casey for their time and their consideration and setting up this meeting as well as your, you all's time and consideration for attending and learning more about the Champ tool as we try to develop it and try to get out any of the bugs in order to make it as useful as possible to many, as many groups as possible. So thank you again.
Young girl Omar.
Only one. And it was great, even though the University of Michigan connection, I still liked it. So. Appreciate it.
Understandable.
We have some thank yous in the comments as well.